I'm the Director of Finance for Kasenengwa.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members. My name is Kampo Chama. I'm Director of Planning.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members. I'm Paul Walusungu Tera. I'm the Director of Engineering for Kasenengwa.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members. I'm Robin Selongwe, Assistant Indian Auditor, Kasenengwa Town Council.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members. My name is Bande Frame, Assistant Procurement and Supplies Officer.
Auditor General.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members, good morning CS and your team. My name is Mashao Gabriel, Director, representing the State Provincial Audit Office. I also request my colleagues to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members of the Committee. Good morning CS and your team. Collins Samunder is my name, Assistant Director, Eastern Province.
Thank you Chair. Good morning everyone. My name is Simon Munyama, from the Planning and Research Department, Office of the Auditor General.
Good morning. My name is Robin Dasingani from the Planning and Research Department.
Government and Rural Services Commission.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members. Good morning Kasenengwa Town Council and your team. CS, I'm Local Government Service Commission and I'm the Chief Human Sources Management Officer. Thank you Chair.
Secretary of Audit.
Good morning Chair and good morning Honorable Committee. My name is Maxo Chileka from the Office of the Clerk.
Good morning everyone. My name is Roger Chilashier from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you Chair. My name is Emmanuel Walia from the Office of the Clerk.
Honorable colleagues, from my far left.
Kasenengwa, you are welcome, Madam and your team. I'm your humble servant, Mutelo Amishek, MP for Miteete. Thank you Chair.
Kaumbwe.
Thank you Chair, good morning and welcome, Kasenengwa. I'm Honorable Dr. Aaron Moza, Member of Parliament for Kaumbwe, Constituency, Limpetaki District. Thank you.
People of Kalolushi.
Good morning Chair, good morning colleagues, good morning Kasenengwa. My name is Kampan Bamlanga, Member of Parliament for the good people of Kalolushi. I'm also a member of this Honorable Committee. Kasenengwa, you are most welcome.
People of Mangango.
Thank you so much Chair, good morning to you, morning fellow Honorable Members of Parliament, good morning our permanent witnesses, Kasenengwa, our viewers and the listeners out there, good morning to you too as well. Thank you.
I'm Member of Parliament for Mangango. My name is Loham Bamwen.
The people of Dondumwezi on Zoom. Honorable sitting members, yourself. Outside these premises or in any court of law. This cap 12 allows you from prosecution. At the same time, if it is found that you choose to is there to lower the interaction. If you saw that you should freely at the same freely community so that through the whole have been taken remedial.
Thank you Chair for the guidance. Query number one, failure to collect revenue. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings at collected funds and income negative district as sole traders. The effect of the drought led to seizure of some collection has been created with the help of cooperating local governors impact evidence available on an activity premiums and other land related charges and the ongoing engagement with the Royal Highnesses. There's an over collection. Sorry, there's a budget deficit there of 37,770 and this is a result of the petroleum license which was over budgeted by 26,000 and other licenses by 11,770. Chair, the appendices are as reflected on Appendix A. We are saying that a database has been created with the help of our cooperating partners to help us enhance revenue. Under levees Chair, we have another collection of 1,548. This is due to operations of the revenue collection shelters in 2023 and purchase of motorbikes for revenue collection. This triggered enforcement by council police and revenue collectors which led to the over collection. The evidence Chair, we have the revenue also had an over collection 992 and this was as a result of the operations of the revenues collections shelters indicated above 187. The variance was due to deduction made at source in relation to management endeavors to make more community on the importance of importing the work budgeting as finding at the time of audit that they can spend funds and spent funds at the time of audit, 2,258,13. These funds were earmarked preparation of a track bay, drilling of boho, construction of two and council's operations are carried on, were carried on in the following year. The funds were spent in 2024, see Appendix H. Bus accounts, 224,316. This is an operations account and council operations are carried on into the due to the unspent funds from 259 received from Minstrel edge total sanitation activity. The funds have been 112 C 65,972. This is also an operations account carried on to the operation I proceed to page five. Management acknowledges the findings representing a budget local taxes, the cause of the query district as sole traders.
Time was skip it
deliver outputs not achieved. Also that acknowledges the auditor's findings at the time of audit and reconciliations of
Again here, we are guided that this query, you skip it.
Thank you Chair, thank you so much. Management equalized fund 20% for capital projects, capital projects. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to state the following. Project named top up on purchase of tipper truck, amount allocated 371,304. These funds, these are funds that were set aside for the purchase of a tipper truck over two budget periods. Management wishes to report that following the removal of the 20% component, the funds have been relocated action of a staff house, Appendix M Chair. Fencing of a dump site, amount allocated 77,000. This was due to the council not being able to access the land designated for establishment of a dump site due to ongoing engagements with the Royal Highnesses and the communities. Management has since engaged the Royal Highnesses and the affected members in an effort to address claims for compensation, see Appendix 1,000 and the effect issues. Appendix one, audit opinion, our management response. Management the audit and wishes to state that this was as a result of an adverse the action we've taken that an unqualified audit at the Office of appendix N. Preparing financial for a track, track bay, drilling of boho construction, two revenue shelters and installation of two air conditioning units. E, district fund account, 2,294. This is funds have been spent on various council accounts. This is on Appendix I. Wash account, 154. This is due to unspent funds received from Ministry of Water Development. And J, development account and 112, 401. This is an operations account. The Chair, the evidence is as shown at Appendix K. Salaries account, we have 65,972. The funds have been spent on various council accounts. Evidence is shown on Appendix L. Remedial measure, management endeavors to ensure that the funds are utilized timely. Appendix three, failure our response Chair, the variance was a result of non-collection of plot premiums and other land related charges and the ongoing engagement with the Royal Highnesses. Over claims for and the activities and has approved a compensation plan of 100 by 12 plots. B, management will continue engaging all the stakeholders in order to reduce delay. Appendix 20, failure to secure properties with title. Our response Chair, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that title deeds had wishes to at the time of sites also in the boundary it is and has also approved a compensation into 18 by 12 million. Appendix B. Changing all the stake top up on purchase of tipper truck, allocated amount was 371 for the purchase of a tipper truck over two budgeted period. Management wishes to report that following the removal of the 20% capital component, the funds have been relocated to the construction of a staff house. Evidence is on Appendix M. Fencing of dump site, 77,000. This was due to the council not being able to access the land designated for the establishment of the dump site due to ongoing engagement with the Royal Highnesses and the community. Management has since engaged the Royal Highnesses and affected members in an effort to address claims for compensation, see Appendix B. Survey of plots, 100,000. This was due to council not being able to access the land designated for establishment of the dump site due to ongoing engagement with the Royal Highnesses and the community. Our evidence is on Appendix B. Parking bay, 1.2 million. This was due to ongoing works at the parking bay. Works at the parking bay have commenced and are ongoing as in the progress report attached on Appendix G. Management will ensure that resources are utilized timely. Appendix 32, failure to transfer funds to capital accounts. Management wishes to acknowledge the audit findings, action taken. Management wishes to state that the remaining balance of 1,218,888,48 in way was transferred to the capital account, see Appendix Q. Remedial measures, management always ensures, will always ensure that funds are transferred daily. Appendix 33, failure query, management acknowledges the auditor mission has appointed and deployed a fire office to help with the establishment of the fire station. Remedial submission of quarterly staff
Thank you, CS for thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Sorry for the, for that omission. Yes, it is my document.
The question that we proceed with the document that is not authentic.
Chair, in my submission, I can confirm that yes, it was an omission on my part, but this is our document, Kasenengwa.
So at the end of the program, you need to sign your signature.
Yes Chair.
If you want to drop it because I'm sure these documents will be kept somewhere in the future. No one will question its authenticity. Honorable Members, you can proceed with
Thank you so much Chair for your on page 11. Funds of about 1,779,148. CS, you are stating on first of all, you are stating on your action taken that management has had engagement meetings with the Royal Highnesses, village headmen and their communities and has approved a compensation plan of replanning 166 hectares of land. of replanning 166 hectares of land into 18 by 12 meters low cost plots, implying that actually the first allocation that you failed to collect plot premiums for you were not given by the Royal Highnesses. Did you have engagements with the Royal Highnesses and the village headmen for you to have this land to sell out to the general public? If you did, why then did you experience difficulties in this? Why didn't you? Because
Honorable member, thank you so much, Honorable MP. I'll respond by indicating that the land in question, the chair, had already been given consent to by the chief and had passed on to the local authority. However, after the advert was done to the general public, that is when the community began to, we began to have difficulties trying to access the land. This was as a result of the community beginning to make claims for compensation for the land. When we look at Appendix B, Chair, we have to our record, the approval letter of consent for conversion of customary land to leasehold tenure from His Royal Highness Chief Mazimawe and also from His Royal Highness Chief Mesorov. And these two letters were signed, duly signed in 2020.
You engaged the after discussing this matter with the senior chiefs. If you did so, why then are they I submit, Chair.
May I respond?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that question. Chair, that is a matter that has also led to the action taken from traditional land to statutory tenure. The aspect of compensation, Chair, not discussed at that particular time. The background that during the planning, what that the land Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Honorable
Thank you so much. In simple terms, you go to their fields. Where will they then be cultivating? Because those people basically depend on if you get their from them, they will have no